Tuesday, June 13th. Just a reminder again to turn your cell phones to silent mode while the meeting is in progress. Citizens who'd like to address the council must complete a blue speaker request card. You'll find it in the vest bill. I'll give it to our deputy clerk. You will be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. If there are any students in the audience and we're not done by nine, which I hope we're done by at least 8:30, we'll take a short break and sign your forms so you can go home. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Myers. Councilmember Eck.
Present.
Councilmember Scog.
Present.
Councilmember Madewell.
Present.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Present.
Councilmember Fancher.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
President Beazoo.
And Mayor Myers.
Present.
Would you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any council member wish to move a consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote or make other modification for tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that we table the Shoreline Management Discussion on Number Five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item number five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do need a motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
First.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens Communications, the council invites citizen comments to hear from the public on matters before the council or relevant to the council's business. The council values free expression of all points of view as an important democratic value in the community. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes. If others have already expressed your views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. The council expects respect for those who have positions with which one may disagree, so debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. Please refrain from applause after each speaker and only address your comments to the council, not to staff or the audience. Council may request staff research comments received for potential future action. Please take private conversations outside. When you are called to speak, please begin with stating your name and city of residence for the record. We'll start with Andrew Copan.
My name is Andrew Copan. I live in Moses Lake. Being a member of city council is undoubtedly a challenging and often thankless job that requires immense dedication to time. Today, I want to express my sincere appreciation for your commitment addressing the homeless encampment near Home Depot area by enforcing the laws that are already on the book. Your genuine willingness to consider community input and adapt accordingly is truly impressive. It demonstrates the effectiveness of employing Occam's razor principles, which prioritize simplicity and practical solutions. In this case, enforcing existing laws has proven to be an effective, simple, and practical approach to significantly enhance the safety and security of our community without incurring unnecessary expenses. It is disheartening to observe how many public servants, homeless advocates, and nonprofit organizations lean towards complex solutions akin to Rube Goldberg machines. Unfortunately, the Rube Goldberg approach leads to exorbitant costs and ineffective solutions that do more harm than good. A clear example, not related to Moses Lake, is the San Diego Housing Commission's plan to purchase three extended stay hotels at a staggering cost of approximately $400,000 per unit, a $16 million approach to only accommodate at most around 400 people. Instead of investing in proven programs such as drug detox, counseling, mental health support, education, and rehabilitation, they have chosen an approach that fails to address the underlying issues effectively and adversely impacts the lives of the homeless and to the community as a whole. It is important to realize that the way we address the homeless issue has far-reaching consequences that may not be immediately apparent. When laws go unenforced and antisocial behavior is tolerated or accepted, why do we act surprised that young people and even those with life experiences are influenced to act in similar antisocial ways? Our recent Spring Festival serves as a sobering example. It has become increasingly unsafe over the years with incidents of violence escalating. My wife and I personally witnessed a person being tackled and arrested by the police for inappropriate behavior, and then reports of fights, stabbings, and gang-related activities have become alarmingly frequent, so much so that vendors had to close down early. I sent to council an email from one such vendor and have yet to hear back from anyone regarding it. Given the city's ongoing process of hiring a new city manager, someone who will play a crucial role in addressing these issues, it is paramount that we prioritize selecting an individual who is not offended by being referred to as a public servant. The person we will hire will serve as a reflection of the values upheld by city council. We cannot afford a city manager driven by ego, someone who severs communications or makes accusations of hatred or disrespect or harbors personal grudges towards members of our community. Such behavior is unacceptable and unprofessional, whether it comes from a city council member or city manager. We must carefully consider the potential detrimental impact of the new city manager if they were to adopt such an attitude. Instead, let us work together to create a positive-
Mr. Copan, just the final comments, please. Thank you.
Instead, let us work together to create a positive environment built on mutual respect, collaboration, and an unwavering focus on the well-being of our community. Again, I commend your obvious dedication to addressing the homeless issue and your commitment to finding practical solutions. I stand with your pursuit in making our city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Delugie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Alicia Delugie, Moses Lake. Well, I'm not going to continue to beat the homeless issue. I've already provided you guys a solution, so when you're ready to be receptive to it, let's rock and roll. I wanted to let you guys know that the Washington Attorney General recently enjoined in the PFAS litigation, and some of the businesses are looking at settling out, so pretty soon that pot is going to start to be filled. And I encourage you to send a letter of thanks to the Attorney General's office so that when that money is available, that our name will be recognized, and our name will already be in that hat. Let's see. I also went ahead and sent out a letter through the White House to the EPA and the Department of Defense with regards to them considering helping clean up the PFAS problem that's in the port. But at this time, I'm also asking for you guys to do a collaboration, a formal request with the city and the port to them as well, please and thank you. In regards to water conservation in California, what they were doing is they were actually only allotting, because you do every other day, but if someone wants to water all day long one day and then not the other day, we're not really saving water. It's kind of like smoke and mirrors. So what California did is they actually paid attention to the amount of units that were being used per household and put a cap on that, although some people would go over. One of the balances would be if people want to choose to go over, if they go over that amount, then they get charged more. The only bad thing that I foresee is that if it's like a business where people live is that they raise the rent for other people, and then the small people are the ones that are going to end up getting hurt. So if you were to go that route, I would highly recommend that you also consider setting a cap on that rent increase so that people don't suffer if other people don't want to help out with the water conservation issue that we have, or the water issue that we have. So with regards to police pursuits, it's in our capital budget right now. There's actually $3 million in grants for funding for different tools for the police to use. I don't know if Kevin knows anything about that, and if he does, he'd probably be a more informative person, but there's $3 million in grants. What I did ask Kevin to do was to consider asking you guys to allot some money to get some of the tools that the other side of the state is using, and the reason why is so that I can do a cross comparison and correlational studies so that either in our supplemental budget and/or the next budgetary capital budget session, I can request more funding, but I got to be able to have backup. And I can have backup either through numbers or through numbers by data. And then the last thing-
Alicia, final comments, please.
Okay, yeah. So I just wanted to say thank you. Today, I was at Macosh Park, and I saw the sign with regards to water and water conservation, and it explaining how we're watering that area. Super duper awesome educational stuff, but I noticed that there was an area that's not getting properly watered, and since that water is not affecting the drinking water, if we could possibly get that fixed. So in sum, if you guys could do the two formal requests, or at least consider those letters, to back up what I'm doing to try to help you guys out, that would be super fantastic, and I'm sorry I went over my time. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Elliot, we will call on you for Agenda Item Number Four. Onto the mayor's report. I do have a proclamation to read for the Yanazawa, Japan sister city. So I'll read that now. Whereas Yanazawa City, Japan, and the city of Moses Lake, Washington formally entered into a sister city relationship with the signing of the appropriate documents in both Yanazawa City and the city of Moses Lake in May of 1981. Whereas Yanazawa City, the city of Moses Lake, and their respective sister city and friendship committees have promoted the establishment of a friendly relationship between the two cities and their residents during the last 40 years. Whereas Yanazawa City and the city of Moses Lake have established student exchanges to further the friendly relations between the city's citizens. Whereas an adult contingent from Yanazawa City has visited the city of Moses Lake nearly every year of the sister city relationship, advancing the friendship between the cities. Whereas Moses Lake's parks and streets have benefited by the relationship with Yanazawa as evidenced by the Yanazawa Boulevard and Park. Whereas decades of youth and adults have been positively impacted by the strong ties between our cities. Now therefore, on June 13th, 2023, we celebrate our relationship and commemorate the long ties and strong friendship developed between our cities. The Parks and Recreation and Cultural Services Board appointment, the city received-
Don, we're not done yet.
Oh, you have something else?
Yes, also to go along with that, the Yanazawa Sister City Program presented us with the tapestry that you see in the back of the room there last year, and as a show of gratitude for that, we've decided to present them with these two prints from a local artist, Kim Matthews Wheaton, that show the agriculture in the area and some of the local geology, which is obviously unique to our area. Somebody who's gone to Japan in the past, I will say that Yanazawa is similar to Moses Lake in that they have an agricultural background, but their landscape is significantly different than here, and so I thought this would be a good way of showing what we have in common, but also what makes us unique. And so I was hoping we could get a group photo with the prints to send along with this before we continue. Is that okay?
If we can get everybody up front.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Sister City Program, so thank you for being here tonight, Amador.
Yeah, of course. So my name's Amador Castro from Moses Lake. I'm on the board for the Moses Lake Yanazawa Sister City Exchange Program, and I've also been a chaperone a couple times. So just to give a quick update on what we hope this next year brings, as a board, we are working to get this program up and running again with a real exchange happening in the summer of 2024. With COVID shutting everything down and the passing of some very important people, it would seem easy to feel as if the exchange program has run its course. But we, as a board, would hate to see that happen, given that the program's been going for over 40 years, and we would desire to continue to see that tradition going on. So we're working with getting information out to Moses Lake High School, Vanguard Academy, and Moses Lake Christian Academy as early as September of 2023. It's important for us to start recruiting earlier than normal. Kristen Moore has been working with Parks and Recs to get a memorial bench set up at Yanazawa Park that will be dedicated to Paul Hirai of Moses Lake and Mr. Harkari of Yanazawa. We were generously gifted $15,000 to make this happen. It would be a beautiful addition to the park and somewhere we can bring delegations from Japan so that they will know how important that these two men were to relationship shared between the two cities. You talked about the artwork already, so just, you know, we're going to send that over to Japan as a thank you for the beautiful tapestry that they sent us, but I would also like to thank the city for their continued support for this program. It really does make a difference in the students' lives. We watch them grow from the moment they find out that they've been chosen for the trip until they host their counterparts who come and stay with them here in Moses Lake. It's a friendship and bond that lasts a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry that I skipped over that portion. The Parks and Recreation and Cultural Services Board has vacancies. There were three applicants that applied, and the chairperson, Charlene Rios, and director Doug Coots interviewed those candidates and recommended that I appoint Brad Harshman for the existing vacancy for the unexpired terms that will end or request reappointment on December 31st, 2023. And I do concur with their recommendations. Would the council make a motion to confirm the appointment?
I so move. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I don't believe so. I don't think he's in attendance today. The New Parks and Recreation and Cultural Services Committee, at our CMP meeting last month, we did ask to pull parks out of that meeting. There was just too much happening within that meeting and felt that parks sometimes got pushed to the side, so we decided to create a new committee that will meet on the third Tuesday of each month at noon. Were there any council members that were interested in serving on that board? We have up to three positions that can serve. It is the same. No, it's the fourth Tuesday for the CMP. Okay.
Judy and I would do that.
Anybody else?
Can you clarify again what two would be?
Just for the Parks Recreation and Cultural Services, just so that, yeah, we just pulled it out of Community Development. Do we need a motion to approve? A separate motion for each person, or can we do it all as a blanket? More motion? Just need a motion to approve?
I'll move to confirm the appointment of the council members as Dustin Schwartz, Judy Madewell, and David Eck.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, guys, for volunteering. Does council wish to have any business brought to a future meeting? Councilmember Fancher?
I guess I just would say again, in light of the earlier discussion on the study session, I'm very serious about figuring out how we move forward on solutions, staff. I know that you've worked hard on doing it, but I think the future study sessions that we do on this need to be productive study sessions, because I know we need to do it in a group, but we figure out what those topics are, hopefully quickly, and then get it out so we get good production. So whether that's for a future agenda or a separate study session or what it is, but we need to work on solutions, so.
I might suggest that it might behoove us to have a study session in the next couple of months before budget, so that a way, if you're talking about expending some money, that we're doing that before we start to really get into the numbers.
I think a couple of months is too long. The budget's coming quick.
So next month. We'll find something in July.
Councilmember Eck?
Yes, I wanted to fully agree with Mark. We need absolute understanding and clarity of this issue. The scare tactics are fine, but we need the real truth and the real issues. Thanks, Mark.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes, I had an issue brought to my attention, which I think has been brought to everybody's attention since it's out in the public, but there is quite a lot of shopping carts out in the community. I was hoping maybe we could bring forward possible ordinances to deal with that, or at least look into that and see why that's occurring.
I've got some ordinances. I think we talked about this, that there are companies, there is a company in town that goes and picks the shopping carts up for the businesses and then takes them back and charges them a fee. I think it might behoove us maybe to reach out to that company and see if they can just start picking them up more often. Obviously, they contract with the businesses, and so the businesses are paying for it.
Okay.
But I have some ordinances from other cities around the state.
What's the prevailing belief in the state of Washington as far as theft is concerned, and what is-
The businesses would have to be the ones that would be the victim in the theft, and businesses aren't willing to go to court on a shopping cart, so, which is why you see them out there, because they're not willing to be the quote-unquote victim of a theft.
Okay.
So there are other avenues. I read some where the city actually goes out, the code enforcement goes out and picks them up, stores them, and then charges the businesses to get them back, but that would entail creating some sort of a location you could store them at. So there are other options out there. You know, some of them talk about trying to create ways so that people can't take the shopping carts off the property. Some of the businesses have them, but those are mainly for shopping carts inside the business, not necessarily out in the parking lot, so.
Okay.
So yes, but I can figure out who the company is that picks those up and see if we can get them to pick them up a little more often.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, they're identifiable by the establishment from which they came, right? So is there, let's say I just left, I don't know, a lawn chair down at the park or something, and you could identify it as mine, and I abandoned it there, is that littering?
Not necessarily, because you would have to be able to prove their intent was to litter as opposed to just, I forgot it, or I thought somebody's going to pick it up. You know, leaving a bag of garbage that has your name in it, that's littering, and that's leaving garbage there, but forgetting an item, that would be a little tougher to prove.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway, but I've seen the shopping carts around. I get where you're going.
Before we continue, are we going to go further into the cart thing, or are we going to discuss it later? Well, I got a bunch of requests here, so I just wanted to clarify, if it's going to be an item of discussion, then we can bring it up at a future meeting, but we did have a conversation that-
I'll let you guys make that decision, not me.
Okay. We have discussed this actually before this meeting, so just waiting to hear back from the company.
Let me reach out to the company, and then I'll bring back some information, so, see if we can just get them to pick them up a little quicker.
Okay.
And if it does become an issue, I would strongly encourage that it becomes a code enforcement issue and not a police issue.
Okay, we can move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three things on here, and first, I'm going to call out Fire Chief Brett Bastian for recognition.
All right. I'll have our medical services officer, Todd Chauncey, come up to make some presentations, and as Amanda Taylor and Louis Espinoza. Is Louis, did Louis make it tonight? Well, we've got Amanda. So I want to talk a little bit about CPR, and when a person's heart stops beating or the person stops breathing, brain death can occur in as little as four minutes, and CPR can help save lives and minimize damaging effects that can occur while waiting for emergency responders to arrive. And sudden cardiac arrest can happen to people at any time or place, and victims must be treated immediately. If CPR is performed immediately, it can almost triple the chance of survival from an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. And on the afternoon of May 3rd of this year, Amanda was on her route as a letter carrier for the postal service, and she witnessed a male patient lying on the ground near the front of his home. Amanda yelled for help and began CPR, and she was joined by the victim's neighbor, Louis Espinoza, who continued CPR until the arrival of our units. The Moses Lake Fire Department wants to recognize Amanda and Louis, who stepped up and provided CPR to the victim until emergency responders arrived and took over care, and we'd like to give her a certificate of appreciation and one of our challenge coins that says, "I made CPR count."
We absolutely love to hear those stories, and we greatly appreciate the quick action. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Moving on, PRR, Inc., I asked the council if you would give me the authority to negate this contract that we have with PRR. This is, if you remember, the communications firm that was doing the water conservation media, and they completed Phase One, which was $20,000. They have not started Phase Two, which is $80,000, and so now is a good time to terminate the contract if you so choose, that I can send them the 30 days notice in writing, and we can terminate and save that $80,000. And I don't need a motion, I just need a bunch of head nods. Okay, I think we're good there. Thank you. Moving on to the Opioid Abatement Council ILA. This is an ILA that is, is that regional ILA, I believe everybody's got a copy of it. We need to get it approved so that the county can also get it approved so that we can get part, take part in that committee. So I believe you all had received a copy of it. At least, I'm hoping you did. So any questions on that? So I will need a motion on that one, though, to, oh, and actually, I don't, strike that. Actually, no, yeah, we need a motion on that, don't we? We need a motion on that.
I move that we approve the ILA.
We have a motion and a second to approve the opioid abatement council in our local agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the Partite contract amendment, this is extending, actually, the contract for Kirk Holmes and Partite was already approved, but we added the funding for the remainder this year, or until we can find a municipal services director. So just so you know, this is to fund him for the rest of the remainder of the year.
So, but if we find a new municipal services director, we can terminate. How much notice?
I don't know what the notice, you know what the...
I don't know if the notice is in the contract.
I'd have to take a look. I'm assuming it's 30 days, like a normal contract, but I would have to take a look.
Just was curious, I mean, if we extend it six months, and then, yeah, there should be some overlap, anyway, but I mean, if all of a sudden we found one, and...
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we're close to finding municipal services director.
No, no, I know that, too, but I'm just saying, I don't want to have this long-term, because it's six, is it six months more?
Yeah, the contract was approved apparently earlier through the end of December.
Right.
But it wasn't, it was only funded for the first half of the year.
Right.
So we just funded it for the second half.
Okay.
Yeah. So the contract was already agreed previous. I just, we're just funding it through the end of the year, or until that position gets filled. And I do need a motion on that.
I'll make the motion to fund the contract that we entered through the end of the year.
Thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
And the last thing I have is, is last night, I sent each of you a DOE grant award. The city was granted an ASR $200,000 grant for aquifer storage recovery. If you are good with that, we would entertain a motion so that we can sign that grant and move forward with that.
I would say, in light of Mark's earlier comments, I so moved that we accept the grant.
Yep, I'll second.
I'll get that.
Therefore, I'll second it, Mark.
I need to second it?
Everybody second this one.
Good.
Any other discussion on this item? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And Mayor, I have one more thing, it's not on this, but it just got brought up with the tabling of the Shoreline Master Plan. I was just informed that it has to be adopted by June 30th, or we're out of compliance. So if you bring it back, if you want the staff to bring it back, then on the 27th, you would have to approve it so that we're not out of compliance. And I'm going to defer to people to my left, because that was just...
So I have a question. We went through this with the comprehensive plan, that we were out of compliance, but we weren't, but when we went through to pull the application back, we were, I mean, Ecology was on there, or Department of Commerce was on there, and they made the comment that this is how I would do it, and they basically gave us a blessing to amend it. So compliance is kind of one of those words. I mean, what if we are?
Is there any fines or anything, I think, that you're trying to get at?
When we first adopted the shoreline management plan, we were being pressured, you know, I mean, and, but it was just like, as long as you were moving in the right direction.
So there are different penalties for failure to adopt a shoreline master plan, period, and then failure to update. So we're at the update, the 10-year period for updating our SMP. So obviously, the state agencies with jurisdiction have the administrative enforcement authority to make determinations of noncompliance and levy any penalties that they're authorized, and then, of course, you can have a challenge from a citizen. The more significant pieces are, you know, the impacts that noncompliance has on our application for funding. So there's nothing automatic that happens on July 1st if we're not in compliance?
Councilmember Skog?
The penalties that they might impose, is that like a dollar, or is that like a bajillion dollars?
Somewhere in there.
No, it's not a bajillion dollars.
Well, it seems like there's, these, you know, regulations have huge impacts on local people just trying to put a dock in, or whether they want to get rid of some tulies or something. And it seems like, I know I would like to have more of a discussion, you know, whether it's publicly or executive or something, of just what impact that shoreline management brings to the people who live along the lake, and not, and I just don't want to sign up to say, "Well, it sounds good." So I don't know when we can do that, or if we have to do that before the end of the month, or if we can just say we forgot to mail our application in, or it's in mail.
So we've had, we've had outside consultants working on the update of the SMP for several months. I guess the one thing that I would make you aware of, for those of you who were not on the council during the first update of our shoreline master plan, is that we have not always been timely with our compliance efforts, and so we are definitely on the state's radar in terms of not always being timely with that compliant effort. We have, and it's probably, you know, because of the community desire to have a little more latitude when it comes to shoreline development, but we already have the most liberal buffer of any of the jurisdictions in the state. So we've kind of pushed that boundary as far as we're going to get it. I'm not sure what other issues came up during our update, but I can go back and pull the correspondence that we received from the state in 2013, 14, if that's helpful. But I just want you to be aware, this isn't the first time that we're behind. And so I wouldn't be surprised if we delay this too long beyond the June 30th deadline that we will be hearing from the state agencies.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
I have a question, not to single out Councilmember Skog, but was there a specific reason why we can't at least hear the discussion? Because we're not voting on anything today. It was, it's a presentation with a potential vote for the next council meeting. So I just was curious if there was something specific that's, that made you want to pull it? Because you're, what I'm hearing is, we want to hear about it, and that's what would have happened tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, it was a presentation, first reading. And I guess I would add, if there are issues within the SMP that you want changed, or, you know, and you direct staff to do that, then we can bring that back to the 27th meeting, and then maybe can get something worked out that night. But we need at least direction from the council as far as what changes you want to see, if any, and then maybe we can get this done by the 30th.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yeah, as far as the funding component for it, and our ability to seek funding if we're out of compliance, is there, and maybe this is a question for Kirsten specifically, but is there funding that we're seeking that is contingent upon being in compliance?
Not at present. But, you know, the state will come up with new cycles of various grants throughout the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that most of the grant funding, because it's such a competitive field now, they have a list of criteria that you have to check off in order to qualify, and one of those is GMA compliance.
Okay.
Councilmember Madewell?
So I have a couple of issues. One is, it's a very large packet that we don't have, we had two weeks to read it, have no time for discussion amongst ourselves to even decide what we like, what we don't like, or if we're, whatever. That's part of my issue, is I actually took it on vacation and didn't get to read it all. And so that's, sometimes we get large packets like that, and we don't have time to go through them, or to talk about them. This is something that's really important, you know, to me, and I know to everybody else it is, too. And we need to have a way of fixing this in the future. I don't know, it's...
If I may make a comment, I believe tonight was just intended to, you received the packet in a separate link, so you'd have it in advance. The consultant was on the line tonight to just speak to it, and then it was to allow you the opportunity to ask questions if you had any, and then come prepared for a full discussion at the next meeting, which would have given you a month. But there was no intention for any decisions to be made tonight. That was the point of having it on the agenda, to just have the initial discussion.
Thank you.
If you choose to put it back on the agenda, I, is she still on the call? Okay. Otherwise, we don't, we'll have her get off the call.
Councilmember Skog? I guess, Deanna, Deputy Mayor Martinez?
As I've been recalling all of our city council discussions, you know, we've asked city staff, or directed city staff, to make sure we have plenty of communication. And so, again, I feel compelled to listen to their presentation, understanding that we're not making a decision, and as we listen to it tonight, maybe there are some things that come up, including also being, you know, having more time to read the packet. But we've directed them to communicate with us, and we're now telling our city staff not to. So I'm, there's conflict there, contradiction, and I would, I would appreciate listening to the presentation today, so we can have more time to talk, think about it over the next weeks. Thank you.
And to add on to that, when I first called on council, I was extremely shocked at how little control that we have on some things. So during the presentation, if we get to hear it tonight, I'd like to hear the pieces that we do have the ability to change, because a lot of it is going to be, you have to adopt this. So I'd be interested in that portion. Councilmember Skog?
Who writes the, the report, or the...
These are great questions, that would be really appropriate under this discussion item, but a lot of it's required language by the state. And then there's, as you were just pointing out, Don, there's certain areas where we have some local control. And my understanding is that when we did the update 10 years ago, there was a lot of negotiation on the buffer size for the shoreline, that, as Catherine pointed out, we have the smallest one in the state. I wasn't here for any of that, but there are certain pieces that it's considered like a model ordinance, that you must adopt this language, and then there's a few pieces that we can have some control over. But the consultant would be able to speak to that.
The staff kind of, are they copying, pasting things from some of the stuff that has to be there?
So essentially, the one that's already in effect at the moment was approved by Ecology and the council all those years ago. What occurred with this one was that they, the consultants and the Department of Ecology reviewed it to determine any pieces that needed to be changed. So in the packet, you'll see the areas that are edited. There's not that many, honestly.
Is that something that if you or a staff person read something that was from the, you know, the Department of Ecology, and felt that that didn't really fit the, how we do things here, or how we'd like to do things here, do flags go off, and where you could say, "Council, you know, this is in there, but you might want to take a hard look at it, I don't know if that really applies to us, and we might want to do something different?" I mean, can we, as a council, depend on you and your staff to have looked at that stuff and said, you know, "Yes, yes, yes, whoop, ding, ding, ding"?
Yes, and we...
Can we count on you to find the onerous things, particularly as it applies to, you know, our way of doing things?
Our locality, yeah, sure. And we did a lot of review with the Planning Commission. I know you guys are feeling like you're not getting a lot of time to review, but they, they looked at it several times over the past several months, and they did have a public hearing on it and recommended approval, I think it was in April. But there, as you pointed out, there's some pieces that we just don't have control over, and then there are portions that we do. So that's what tonight was, to just kind of present it to you, and knowing that you may not have been able to read the entire thing, just pose a few questions, have time to deliberate before the next meeting, and then the next meeting would be an actual public hearing. It doesn't mean you'd have to adopt it, but it would allow the public to speak at that one as well. And then you could, you know, continue it and have additional ones if needed, if all your questions weren't answered to your satisfaction, or we needed to do additional research.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes, it sounds to me like maybe there's a flavor for putting this back on the agenda for this evening, and I think we, we're still in the city manager's report, correct? So I would make a motion that we just put it back on the agenda.
Done.
Rescind that motion to take it off of the agenda and put it back on the agenda? And then...
So we vote on that, or?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
My city mayor's report is done.
Thank you. Item number one, public hearing, the interim control for covered parking findings ordinance 3026, presented by Kirsten Second.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So a couple of meetings back, we were approached at city council by a member of the community who had expressed some concerns. She had converted her garage into a daycare facility, but the city does have some requirements surrounding parking, and it's included in the Moses Lake Municipal Code that you have to have at least one covered parking space. Now, all single-family homes have to have two parking spaces, and so council directed staff to proceed with an ordinance to remove the covered parking requirement. So on May 9th, 2023, during the regular city council meeting, council instructed the staff to return with options to address that parking concern, to allow the use of the garage for the habitable space for the daycare. And so on May 23rd, council conducted the following. They declared an emergency, stated findings of fact regarding the emergency, established an effective date, and directed staff to prepare a work plan. You did adopt an emergency ordinance to put that into effect, but then there's a requirement to actually go back and do the work that you'd normally do to adopt any land use ordinance. So the covered parking requirement is found in Moses Lake Municipal Code 18.20.050. And I'm going to try to share my screen here. If it doesn't work, that's probably okay. Yeah, the modification's pretty minor there, under section 4. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit more. Pretty minor amendment, to where it states that the minimum required of covered parking space is in addition to off-street parking is required in chapter 18.54. We're proposing to remove that word "covered," and then the footnote 11, which reads "in a garage or carport constructed to the standards of the state building code." So you've already adopted this ordinance, and that would remove the covered piece. Residences would still be required to have two parking spaces for a single family. But now the next steps are to have the public hearing tonight, and one of the other directions from council was to prepare a work plan, and let me get back to that, since I'm sharing the screen, anyway. The plan would be to simply develop an outreach and public information program, circulate the regulations to developers, industry experts, anyone in the public that wanted to participate, so that the public has an opportunity to review this. And then we would review it with the Planning Commission, and then there's always a requirement when we adopt any changes to land development regulations, we have to conduct SEPA, and also send it to the department. regulations, we have to conduct SEPA, and also send it to the Department of Commerce for their review. When that's done, we'd actually then hold a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then it'd make it way back to you guys for a final public hearing. So that, that's the work plan in a nutshell. So staff is just looking for direction on, or approval of the work plan, and allow you to conduct your public hearing. And so that's my comments for now. After you conduct the public hearing, if you have any questions for me, I'll be ready to answer those. Thank you.
Before we have council discussion, I will open the public hearing and call for public testimony. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, please step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence. Was there anybody present online that would like to speak? With no public testimony, we will close the public hearing. Open the floor for council discussion or questions. Councilmember Fancher?
Just, just to be clear, so what we're doing is basically laying out, approving to move forward with the plan. I mean, and then, and we're still going to go through the full process of the work plan.
Yes, so the interim regulations are in effect.
Right, right.
But then we need to just go back and do the process you would normally do.
Which will still have a second opportunity for?
Yeah, we will do the outreach to the development community, homeowners, the public, allow anybody to comment to us. We'll have workshops with the Planning Commission, do SEPA. SEPA's a notification to the general public, public hearing with the Planning Commission. So there'll be some opportunities for people to provide their feedback.
So my question, what happens if, for some reason, we get comments that say, "We can't do this"?
That is a matter for city council to set the policy. Now, in regards to the specific individual, right now, she's just working with staff to get her garage into compliance for being a habitable space. If at the conclusion, it was determined by council to not make this change, she would then have to convert it back to a garage. In the meantime, anyone else proposing developments wouldn't necessarily have to put in covered parking. But I think we've discussed it previously. It's kind of driven by the market. I think most of the homes being constructed will come with garages.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Just a point of clarification, I noticed that you would be taking out the part about building it to the state, building code, but in the event somebody does build a covered parking, does the, if you make the amendment, will it still state that that does have to follow?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the building code is already adopted by council. So any, any garage, you know, a house with a garage, or even a separate garage, has to follow the building code. It's just added in there as like extra, like clarity, like, everything has to follow the building code.
One other question. You mentioned notifying homeowners specifically. Would the intention there just basically be to let them know that, let's say there's a vacant piece of property down the street from them, that there may be homes there in the future that have no covered parking?
When we say this, so we're, we're just going to be notifying the general public about the fact that we're proposing this change.
Okay.
We weren't necessarily going to mail a letter to every single residence, but try to, yeah, try to do that outreach, yeah.
Kind of wanted to get an idea of the flavor of what that would look like. So I, as we experienced just now, I don't know that there's going to be too much public comment on it, but we'll see.
You never know.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Sorry, I think my question was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's no further discussion. We accept a motion to authorize the work program.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, Resolution 3940. This will be presented by Richard Law.
So it's that time of year again. Every year, we are required to update by the end of June, our six-year transportation improvement plan. And just to let you know, we did, as was requested in the last couple of years, we did present this to the Planning Commission last Thursday to get any of their comments. They actually did have three projects that they would like to, some planning projects that they would like to include on this list that, due to when we published this originally, did not get into your packet. I can talk to those briefly. But again, the TIP is a, a planning document, and in some sense, a, it is a fluid plan. And so some of the reasons for the plan are, for certain grant opportunities, if it is not identified on the plan, it is not eligible for funding. And as funding packages come available, sometimes they are constrained. And so sometimes, certain projects are eligible and some are not. But if they are not on the list, then we cannot apply for that funding. So you look at a lot of these projects on here, and there are some big projects, some really big asks. You might even call it a kind of a wish list. But if the, those large funding areas or packages come available, we can at least apply for it. And so that's why you see a lot of these items on there. It is a long list, and some of them are recurring, some of them are big asks, you know, another bridge. And there's also a lot of planning-type efforts going on in there to try to be able to understand our traffic network better, and where we need to be focusing our efforts to fund and build improvements to impact the traveling public. So briefly, the three added, added projects that Planning Commission recommended is they want to do some work and study to, on a possible I-90 interchange at Potato Hill Road. They thought that might be valuable. Possibly another interchange also at Road K, or Clover Drive on the city side. And then the other one was, would be to do a agricultural equipment mobility study. They were worried about sometimes when our people are moving agricultural implements on the highway system, how sometimes that can create problems, and are there ways to possibly route them around, specifically the I-90 corridor, where they're trying to get from west of the lake to east of the lake, and some of those things. So those were the three items that they wanted to include on there. So we can, as part of your, our discussion tonight and direction, we can add those items to this list before it's passed. Tonight, we'd like to have the required public hearing. And like I said, we do need to adopt it before June 30th. So if we do not, in order to be eligible for those fund, those funding opportunities, so if we do not adopt the ordinance tonight, there will be another opportunity at the end of the month. So any questions on the, I guess, I guess first, we probably need to have the public hearing portion, and then I'll entertain any questions on specifics on the six-year TIP.
So we will open the public hearing to call for public testimony. Again, if anybody would like to speak on the matter, step up to the mic, state your name and city of residence. If there's anybody online? Hearing none, we will close the hearing. Council discussion questions, we'll start with Councilmember Fancher.
I would make the comment that, thank you, Planning Commission. I think they're good. They were good ideas. Ironically, I've had quite a few conversations, not, not as much as Potato Hill Road, that's the old route that everybody, you know, because of the hill and everything else, it's got some challenges. But that Road K, with all the new, the new hospital, thinking of emergency services rigs and stuff, being, you know, to deliver to the new hospital, Temple, having another access point there, to me, makes potential some sense. I know it's, it's all about money, it's all about approvals, it's all about, but I think that's a great opportunity for traffic. So I think I like that idea.
A couple of these projects overlap with state and federal systems. How does that, how does our plan interact with them, if we want to do a project?
It is an interesting symbiosis when it comes to working in state and federal right-of-way. I-90, being that it is an interstate, is not only DOT, but it is also federal highways. They have the ultimate control. But having them on, we have found that having them on our list, like these, we, we just received a grant to do some pedestrian mobility work around the Highway 17 Stratford Road area. And because it was on our plan, we were able to get the grant money. And so we're, we're trying to kind of lead the, the planning effort from our end, and hopefully, if we can demonstrate, and we're collaborating with the state on the, it is a state-funded grant. So hopefully, as we collaborate on these things and drive at least the planning side of it, that maybe we can get it into their eventual long-term planning and funding cycles. So it, it is, we're trying to drive the, we, we do not have the ultimate control, and we don't have the ability to just go out and hire a contractor to make these improvements, even if we had the money. But at least, we're hoping to be able to drive the conversation from our end, and keep it in people's minds, and hopefully, get these improvements made eventually, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Yeah, thank you. I did look through the list, and it is pretty lengthy. When I was looking through it, however, I just didn't have this on my mind. But can you give me a reminder on what complete streets is? And then, of the items on the list, which of those, is that something that we continue through this plan, or?
So the complete streets, and, and the city does have a complete streets ordinance. We were, several years ago, in order to qualify for some other funding that came through the state, and we were required to have a complete streets ordinance. And basically, what a complete streets ordinance is, is that we're identifying all right-of-way users, not just vehicular traffic. So this would include bike and pedestrian mobility issues. So we are basically committing to making sure that when we are working on a, a road improvement project, that we're identifying how we're helping all road users and not just vehicles. So essentially, that's what that is. And so you see a lot of these in the project types over here, there are a lot of bike-ped identified projects, where we're trying to basically increase the capacity of our road systems to accommodate better bike and pedestrian traffic along with our vehicle traffic. Did that answer your question? I'm not sure I answered the question you asked.
It did, yes. So basically, we are continuing to seek funding to support that effort. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
And then, as part of that, I assume that there's some prescriptive measures that we take to comply with that methodology or theory of?
There's, you know, of course, there's minimum standards as far as how you build a sidewalk, you know, slopes, widths, traveled way widths, ramps, those types of things, driveway construction, all of that. This is, this is more than that. You're trying to make sure that, that you have a complete network to where you're not leading somebody on a bike or walking, and then they end up at a dead end and they got no place to go. You know, how do you make those connections? How do you make a safe crossings of various arterials and those types of things? How do you improve the networks to encourage or allow those, those people that have that as their mode of transportation to, to be as accommodated as our vehicles? And that, it's, it's very challenging, because we've been so focused on moving cars around town for so long.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We are looking for a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, Resolution 3940, with the three additions from the, recommended from the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And real quick, I would just like to thank Levi Bisnet and Lee Ramsey took this on this year, and they added a lot more information, added some maps, and Ariana in our GIS department put together the, so I think they did a good job in just presenting a lot more information and visual information to make it easier to follow. So I really appreciate their time and effort.
Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Need a motion to approve?
I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Old Business, item number four, Water Conservation Code Fee Update, Ordinance 3029, and Resolution 3941, presented by Richard Law.
So we, the water, what did we call ourselves? I can't remember. Anyhow, the Water Resource Committee, yes, and we have Chad and Jessica here. Sorry, I was trying to make notes and talk at the same time, and I failed miserably. We presented this here a couple of meetings ago, and we were asked to table this item and bring it back at this meeting. And so we have brought it back, and we are just, we're here. If you want to ask some more questions, we're basically are asking to either approve, tell us what you want changed so we can bring it back, or deny it and, and we move on. So I, that's, I, with this, what we're asking. What do you want us to do?
Councilmember Madewell?
Okay. So on switch from odd and even calendar days to designated days of the week, allowing for three days to irrigate, my opinion is that if we're only going to allow three days instead of odd and even, you're going to have more people, people are going to be watering more than if they have odd and even. Okay?
So doing the math, so what we're asking people to do is water two days less a month. Two, two days less a month. And so essentially, one week you'd get three, which this ordinance proposes three, and the other day, the other week, four. So you'd lose one day every two weeks of watering. So the, the biggest things that this allows... So, the, the, the biggest things that this allows us to do, and, and maybe they, they, I don't, I guess, maybe they turn their sprinklers up. They're going to pay more, they're going to pay more in water fees.
I understand that.
So, uh, if their budget allows them to do that. Um, but the biggest thing that we're asking for is on Mondays, is the hardest day for our water system to keep up with the demand. And so if we were allowed to have Monday be a no-water day, it would help the strain on our pumps and our wells and our reservoirs, uh, to ease into the week a little more. So that, that's the biggest reason why we're asking for this, and it would, um, save some water in our watering schedule, so.
And I understand what you're asking. Okay, I, I do. I'm just saying that I just, I believe that people are going to water more because they only have three days to water or two days to water instead of odd and even. That's, that's my concern there. I understand what you're saying. And then, um, I had a problem with restricting irrigation use during the four, or 48 hours after a measurable rainfall event, and you went off of Grant County International Airport. Um, tell me about how much rainfall you're looking at to, um, decide this.
So, Ian, go ahead, Chad, if you want to step up there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Strevey, the Water Division Manager. So, um, when we brought these, the rainfall, the, uh, I'll address the rainfall first. So, so the rainfall is basically a tool for us to, uh, when we are, uh, out doing our drive-bys, looking at people, whether they're irrigating or not, and during the middle of the day, it is pouring down rain, we can stop and educate them a little more. I seriously doubt that we would ever, uh, use that as an enforcement tool, but it is there as an enforcement tool to, if there is pushback, say, you know, this is enforceable. There, this is, uh, something that we could enforce. Uh, a- and so, without that, as just an educational tool, if we were to drive up and, uh, educate, and then the next day it's raining again, and we drive right back by, because there is no enforcement behind that, it may be ignored.
Oh, okay. And I understand what you're saying. Okay? And it, for me, I would be silly to, um, turn my sprinklers on while it's raining. But, but if people are away, say on vacation, and it rains, and they have automatic and it's on, okay, we have probably kind of an issue there. So that's my question, and, and then, um, sometimes it will rain in one place in the city, or snow in one place of the city, and it doesn't snow or rain in another place in the city. So that's why, that's why I'm asking that particular question. So, and, um, okay, so thank, thank you for that information. And then, my big issue, probably my biggest issue, is telling the people within the city that we cannot, that you have to go have a permit to plant sod, and, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not going to do that. I'm, if, I, that's, to me, is too much control. I don't, I have a big issue with that one, and so, um, that's, that's where I'm at with that.
The biggest, and to talk to that real quick, the biggest reason we, we want that exception in there, and to have the permit, um, is, is not because we're, we're wanting to control who can put in grass and who cannot put in gla- grass. It's so, when, so we're informed that, hey, I'm putting grass in, so for the next...
Fourteen days?
Fourteen days, when the neighbor down the street says, hey, he's lo- he's watering on the wrong day, we can say, yeah, we know, but it's okay because he just planted his lawn. So otherwise, if we get a complaint, then we're going to have to send somebody out there, and then the guy's going to say, well, I just planted my lawn, and then, so anyhow, it's, it's more of a tool for us to be able to, um, field those complaints and, and say, yeah, we know about this, it's okay. He's, he's okay because he just planted his lawn, he can do this for two weeks, and then he's got to go back on the regular watering schedule.
So I'm going to use me as an example. In my front yard, when we bought, when we bought our home, they did not put a lot of topsoil down. So I have a large area where the grass is not green, it's brown. So if I wanted to, and I've thought about this, taking that portion of the, portion of the sod out and re- and re-putting sod down. But if it does not take, I don't want to have to come to you and ask for permission to pull up this dead sod and put new sod down. That's where I'm at.
Okay. And, and again, it's, it's not that we're going to, I, I know we have in there right now that they're allowed one permit a year, and that's something that we could change. We, we could, we could do something different if you wanted, if you wanted two, if you wanted the number a hundred in there, it doesn't matter. But if, we, we just want, again, to be able to know that when we get the calls from the neighbor saying, he's watering on the wrong days of the week, that we can tell them, it's okay. It'd be, he's, we're allowing him to get his, his or her lawn going because they just replanted.
And why not just come out and talk to the person who's overwatering instead of having a permit? That's, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm dug in.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Yes, um, couple of questions, uh, also, uh, helping just to maybe come to some sort of understanding, uh, based on, uh, some things that Judy said. Um, if, if we were to pass this water ordinance, um, could we make it very clear that it really is only two days less per month? I think people see that water ordinance and immediately think, um, they're taking away something from me, and it, um, it looks like a lot, but if you look at it over a month's time, it's really only two days in a month. But if everybody does it, then we're saving, you know, exponentially on water, based on, on, uh, the information that you're providing us. Uh, the other thing, um, my, uh, question regarding the permits, is there a cost to a permit?
No.
For those who are putting in new sod?
No.
And I would like to see, uh, different language, that it's not just one per year, because as Judy said, maybe you put new sod in, and it, it fails for some, some reason, and you got to put more in. Um, one, one permit per year is just too restrictive. Um, and I understand that the permit is not for the sod, but for the ability to water outside of the ordinance. Because e- even if we stayed with the ordinance, the way it is now, make no changes, they still, if some, if somebody put new sod in, they would not be following the ordinance because we have to water every other day, correct? So, so there's still, there, that needs to be, that language, I think, needs to still be in there, that there's a permit to allow, um, extra watering outside of the current ordinance, so that code enforcement isn't having to, uh, respond all the time or often. And I understand, time is money, so we don't, if we can avoid code enforcement having to go out all the time, um, because we know that there is a permit in place, I, I think that would help, uh, code enforcement, and maybe they could be addressing other issues, or maybe educating somewhere else where it needs to be educated. Um, so, sorry, uh, Richard, I, I said a lot and didn't allow you to answer the question. So go ahead.
Oh, I, I, so the only question that I heard to respond to is, is, is there a fee associated with this sod permit? And no, that it is a no-fee permit. It's basically, we're just exchanging information so that we can note and prevent, um, i- if there are complaints, we can prevent any cases being opened or whatever, because somebody's watering outside of the published schedule. So, um, and if, if we wanted to change it from one a year to multiple a year, or whatever, whatever council decides, that can be done.
Um, uh, I'm not sure if you have a name for that permit, but could we maybe name it so it's not sounding like it's a permit for sodding your lawn, but a permit for watering? Because I think that might be where some of the confusion and potential contention would be, if it sounds like we need to get a permit to put grass in our yard.
So, so instead of, what, what do we call it now? Is it a new sod permit?
Yeah, so, so we, so we could call it a sod-watering permit. I mean, that takes care of that, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. That's fine, we can, we can do that.
We could take the word permit off, and maybe call it a notification or something? I think permit is part of the issue.
Well, it's permissive by nature, because you're, you're otherwise not allowed to, to water on those days.
Just a term, yeah. Councilmember Schwartz?
Yeah? Yeah, thank you. May- maybe a variance, a sod, a new sod-watering variant? I, I don't know, semantics? It's, it's highly semantical, yes.
We can utilize thesaurus.com.
No, I, thank you Chad and, and Richard, again, for taking all of our slings and arrows. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of things tonight, and, you know, uh, Councilmember Scog brought up a good point, that, you know, we're a proverbial drop in the bucket as far as usage goes in those aquifers. Um, and so this is a challenging conversation for all of us to have, and, and to Councilmember Fancher's remarks about having a solution to some of these problems, um, is paramount, obviously. And I think I've made comments before as well, you know, what are we doing here if we don't have water? And so, yeah, I think that there's a feeling that these are largely punitive. Hearing, hearing you explain tonight the reasoning behind it, uh, some of the things like the sod-watering variants, um, you know, that makes sense to me in that context, and I get that the enforcement isn't, the, the, the objective isn't to fill the coffers with money from, from people with fines, right? That's, it's an education piece. And then again, if there's a neighbor that's going to call and say, hey, this guy's watering every day, why can't I? It, it works to prevent that sort of, you know, issue, and I get all of that. No, no matter how much we try to explain that to people, though, there's always going to be some pushback. And again, you know, we live in a free country and all those sorts of, you know, this is God's gift to us, the water, and all of those things, which I completely agree with those people as well. But, um, so, yes, this is all hard to digest. I, and, and also to Mark's comments about infrastructure versus water supply, those are, those are very important questions, and not to get into the weeds or the cattails as they may be too much on this, but things like shoreline management have something to do with this, and how we view that body of water. You know, the MLIRD views it as a waterway for transport of their water, and maybe we could look at that and address shoreline management completely differently. But water is a different conversation today in this community than it was 20 years ago. I think we all acknowledge that. The graphs that we sho- saw tonight, they aren't any different than what I expected them to be, and I could guess that most people up here also expected them to show that trend. Um, so if it's a matter of that the pumps and the pipes and the reservoirs that we have currently can't keep up with the demand on days like Monday, I think that's what I'm hearing, is that it's not necessarily that there isn't enough water in the ground, it's just that our system, because we're growing, is, is taxed. And it's interesting, because of the growth here in Moses Lake, I would propose it's higher density than it used to be. So if you're talking, um, whatever it was, 800 gallons or? Over 900 gallons a day. Okay? That, that trend should actually be going down, and the more apartments and things like that we see. So there's some other questions that I, I really have. It, it is very surprising. We actually went for, so we did a, we're, we're doing our water system complan update, and we've been reviewing again our water use numbers. In 2015, um, we did our overall ERU, gallons per ERU analysis. So that's an equivalent residential unit annual average, so over 12 months. Um, uh, we were at about 502 gallons per ERU per day was our average use in 2015. We just redid the numbers, it's, it was 590 gallons a day. So our water use has actually risen 20% in the last five years. Um, and so water use is going up. So, uh, take it for what it is, um, we're using more water, um, and we've got more people. And so it's just putting a lot of stress and strain on our existing wells, existing reservoirs. Uh, like Chad was saying, in those 100-degree-plus weeks, every well that's available is running 24 hours a day until it sucks air, and then we shut it off to let it recover a little bit. So we were pumping every well we can, and the, the levels in the reservoir continue to drop. And so that affects fire flow, that affects emergency response. Um, can we go out and drill more wells? Um, yeah, it's real expensive. It's, you know, $2 million, $3 million a hole to drill a well. Can we build more reservoirs? Sure, we can do that too, uh, for, you know, one of our big reservoirs now, those are, those are $6 million reservoirs now. And so it's very expensive. So water rates would have to go up, you know? So what we're asking for is, we, if we can do some of these conservation measures, um, we can take some strain off of our system today while we're trying to figure out a lot of these other complex issues of source and supply and water quality and, um, storage and all of these other things. So there, there's a lot of work to be done. Uh, and I, I'm excited to, to have more of these conversations with council, um, to try to find these solutions, you know? And if there's good ideas in the community, I am beating the bush all the time, asking everybody I can think of about water, and how to get more water, and how to, how to get the state, how to get the feds, how to get the Bureau, how, anybody to help us, to partner with us, and the only, you know, and so if, if, if there's people out there with political clout, if there's people out there that have good ideas, I'm, I'm all ears. Because that's, that's what we're trying to do.
And one other question. Under the revised ordinances, as you guys are presenting this, do you believe that there's a opportunity for the average citizen to dump as many gallons on their yard under these new ordinances as there were before?
The, the things that are going to be...
Yes, I mean, yes.
The, the things that are going to be restricted, or the things that are going to be changed, well, one was the watering schedule, so two days less a month. And the other big one was no watering between the hours of, uh, 10:00 AM...
10:00 to 7:00.
And 7:00 PM, so the heat of the day. So eliminating watering, um, in the heat of the day, and eliminating, uh, and rolling back two days a month of watering. So those were the big things. Um, and then the, the other one that was in there was, you know, if you're out washing your car or whatever, just have, have a nozzle on the end, don't, don't let your hose run in the gutter or on, on the lawn. You know, it's, it's pretty, some, fairly simple, and, and to me, um, logical, uh, changes to the ordinance. And again, are we going to be out there writing tickets every day? No. Uh, we're, we're hoping to get people to understand, come on, can you help us out a little bit? These things seem to make sense. These things seem to make sense, but if, if we don't have it in an ordinance, then if we have, um, abusers of the system, then we have the ability to, to enforce.
Okay, and has there been any discussion possibly, you know, I know we talked about it for another issue we have, but as far as public outreach or assistance or whatever, is there an opportunity to, I don't know if we could start with property management companies to somehow encourage or help offset the costs of a irrigation timer? I know you can buy one that just screws on to your, your hose bib or program.
At, at this point in time, we have not, we've been working with the, um, the Conservation District. Um, you know, we've been partnering with them. Uh, I know you guys just did a, like a desert lawn and landscape. You know, we're trying to, to be, to, to create some education opportunities. Uh, if, if we wanted to do some outreach and education on, on this new ordinance, that, that would probably be a great idea. Um, we haven't, uh, sat down to really think about that yet. But again, the reason we presented it at the time we did is we were hoping that, that every year at the beginning of the irrigation season, we send out information with our water bills outlining what the, what the ordinance and the restrictions are for that year. So we were hoping to have that out in time, that it would go out with the, that billing, but that's already happened, right? We're too late for that? So, um, and, and we could do it again, but it would be an added expense to, to create another, would it, no? If we decided to do it later?
Jessica, if you're going to speak, you gotta go up there.
We can do it. We can do it.
I would, I would also add this. We are, uh, with this PRR contract, uh, negation, we are going to do more communication in-house to the community. Our assistant city manager is working with Lynn Lynch to, uh, get more communications out there. I, I want us on social media a lot more than we are now and a lot more in the media, just getting information out to the citizens. So we will do that in-house and do a better job of that. And I would also add one more thing. I, I've learned more about water in the last month than I care to know. Uh, but last week, we sat in on a meeting, a large meeting with DOE and everybody. There are some grant opportunities available, uh, that would provide, um, water-saving resources to our citizens. They talked about showerheads and toilets and stuff like that, that, you know, we can look at. So when we're talking about conserva, conserving water, you know, with nozzles and timers and things like that, there might be some opportunities for us to get some grant funding to maybe provide some of that to our citizens, uh, to help in the conservation effort.
And, and those, and those would help and they, and would not be insignificant help. But again, those, um, this was actually through, we were, uh, Mark Maynard with the Bureau of Reclamation. He's the man, manager over there in, in Efrida, mentioned that, um, he, when he was working down in, was he in Arizona?
Yeah.
Um, that the federal government has what they call some Water Smart Grants, that they can, uh, help with some of those types of things, low-flow showerheads, low, low-flow toilets, that kind of thing, some grant opportunities for that, which in a lot of older homes can, can make a big difference. Right now, most new homes or anything you go buy at Lowe's or Home Depot, they're all low-flow anyways. I don't know, you can buy the old high-flow toilets or that anymore, uh, commercially, so. But it, it could help. So, so we're, like I said, we're, we're trying to beat the bush anywhere we can, trying to figure out how to make our water situation better today while we're working for a more sustainable and brighter water future, which is going to take time to secure water rights, surface water rights, shallow water rights. Whether we can partner with the Bureau, um, in, in getting maybe MNI water, what, like I said, we're looking, we're trying to look at all avenues to figure this out, so.
When do the grant funding, when does that?
He mentioned it and we, he, we haven't gotten any information on it yet, as far as the Water Smart Grants you're talking about?
No, sorry, the one that we voted on earlier tonight as far as doing the study. When does that commence? Because that, I believe, covers three specific water sources, correct?
Correct. Um, so the, we, the, the official, due to the state's biennium, it starts July 1st. So, um, July 1st, the Department of Commerce will have to process on their end and send us the documents and we can sign it. So hopefully, late summer, uh, we'll, uh, get a, a scope and everything in place to, to figure this out and, um, we can start charging money to it. So it's going to, it'll take a little time to get all the paperwork in place, but.
And then I can't remember, is part of that study, is there, are there implementation measures that are included in there? As far as at the end of it, we just have information or how close will we be to a plan?
So, so with that study, there's, there's basically, uh, let me just try to think in my head. So the first thing is, we're looking at the source. What sources do we think we can get our hands on? And, and the water quality of those sources. So whether it's surface water, shallow groundwater, or, um, lake water? I, I guess that's surface water, or canal water? Whether, and so we'll look at all three, three of those for water quality? And then what kind of, um, treatment methods we'd have to do for all three to, to bring it to a water quality level where we can inject it in the ground? And then the, the next portion is, once we get that testing method, then normally we do a small-scale, a, a bench test, um, and then a, a, a small-scale plant and then we inject somewhere. And then we, we monitor the performance of our aquifer. Whether it's contained enough, when you start injecting water down, usually you'll get what they call a water mound, local water mound. How long does the water mound stay there or is it leaking out as fast as we can put it in the ground? Can we recover it? So that'll be, uh, the next step of that. And then the third step would be, um, going through the, um, the approval process with Department of Health. The grant is through Department of Ecology, uh, going through the process with the Department of Health to make sure that they're, that they are, will approve us. After we've treated it, put it in the ground, when we pull it back out, are they going to let it, let us put it in their water system? That's been, that's been an issue with some of, I know the city of Othello, they got the permission to take canal water, treat it, put it in the ground, and then DOE said, you can't put that in your water system. So, because it, it, it's not natural water. It's, it's not the natural groundwater. So anyhow, we're working, so these departments are, there's some interference going on here and it's tough. But, um, but, you know, we're trying to make sure, once we get past the, the whole treatment process and putting it in the ground, that's, that's the next hurdle. We're just trying to be, go, you know, go in this eyes-wide-open and figure out, you know, if we go to the expense of treating it, putting it in the ground, are we going to be allowed to take it back out and put it in our water system, so?
Before we get too much further, I have a couple of comments. David Scog, I'll allow for some comments, and then we do have a citizen comment.
Okay.
That I'd like to give a chance. So my couple of comments, uh, the, I think the general idea behind this is just to bring the usage of the water in our system, not so much to, to save the aquifer, because that's such a small portion, just so that we can.
Right. We, conservation is not going to save the aquifer. The only thing that is going to save the aquifer is getting the agricultural users off the aquifer. That will buy the communities time. That doesn't, not necessarily mean that the aquifer had, will stabilize because the amount of recharge in that aquifer is so small. So that, once you get the ag users off, uh, there is no assurance that the communities aren't still over-using that aquifer.
We've talked about this so much, I'm, I'm this close to being an expert on the matter. So, Mark, you talked about solutions and I think we're really close to those things. So the aqua, the aquifer recharge being one potential solution. Um, I think we're gonna need another well, shallow well, um, and then another reservoir because we need more capacity within our system. It, I mean, that's what the problem is right now that we're dealing with. So, um, I think budget time, we can start planning for something like that. The, my issue with this ordinance, um, I've kind of dropped off on a couple of items, but the water while, after it rains, 48 hours for, uh, .01 inches, the ground is going to be totally dry, I feel, by the time that they can water again. It was brought up that maybe enforcement, if they are seen watering while raining.
Right.
Could be a compromise.
Yeah, so, so after a heavy rain, the next day where the ground is still wet, obviously because it's rained, you know, and somebody has their sprinklers going, we'll, we'll stop by and have a chat with them and try and educate them. By no means are we going to be citing.
We get so little rain.
I, I realize.
It's going to be an issue to any time now.
And, and if, I would say the rain we do get, we need to make sure that it's not, we're not doubling down with, with potable water after a good soaking of rain.
So if you, if you want to change that threshold, if you want to change the threshold, if you want to say two tenths, or, or not two tenths, but if you want to say, you know, five hundredths or three hundredths versus one, one hundredth, um, that's, whatever. We, we just, we want to be able to say, a, after we've had a good rain, and whatever we want to define that as, if we want to define it as a measurement, if we want to define it as whatever, that we are encouraging people not to water when the ground's still wet.
So if we up that threshold and then lower the timeframe to 24 hours, what would?
That's, it's better than we got right now. Yeah.
Right.
No, no water at the country club, uh, Moses Lake in the middle of the sand dunes versus some places got some good heavy sod. I mean, we can, I can have this argument all day long.
With, with you guys about turf crust management, because that's where my background was. You, you already said it, those that are, want their yard really, really gre, green, there's a, there's a solution. There's an absolute solution under this conservation law, or this conference ordinance. You will water three times as long in that period as you did when you thought you had to do it. There's a solution.
That's what I do.
You will, it will come with a cost.
It will.
But, but there's a solution. So I think we beat this thing till we beat it in the ground because those that want green can have it. You can absolutely have green.
Yeah.
Right. I, I will say, I, I felt like I should walk the walk before I talk the talk. So this year, I, I live, uh, over by Loves', which is sand. I water Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday for 30 minutes a station. My lawn is green. Last week, I turned it up to 40 minutes because it started to dry out just a little bit, so I turned it up a little bit and it's still green. So to say that we can't do that here is just not accurate.
I absolutely agree with that. We, we changed our water schedule to start right at 7:00 PM so we can watch it. And then if we need to add another 10 minutes or whatever, you know, I'll go out there and feel it. So I think it's doable, but I also, and you also have the advantage of sitting in meetings like this or that it's your job, so.
Right, and, 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 and we're going to be out there educating. We're not, we're not going to be heavy-handed right off the bat. Um, you, you only need to get that way when it continuously continues and the neighbors decide, well, he's still doing it, now I can too.
Sure.
And then it's the whole block and then it's the whole neighborhood and then it's citywide, you know, so.
And, and, and like I said, we're here for, we're here for direction. If there are, if there are pieces or, or sections of this that you want us to modify, the threshold, the time after watering, if there's the sod installation variants, whatever, whatever we called it, I can't even remember now, um, we're happy to bring that back. If there's, if there's areas of this that you just, you just want to strike and you just want to keep the, the watering days and the, and the watering from, uh, no, no water in between 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM? And, and that's what you're willing to pass right now, we'll bring that back. We're hoping for, for some help. We're hoping to, to, for some help to, to make, uh, to take a little stress off of our system today so we can keep wa, keep providing water and good pressure and good, um, fire flow, uh, today while we're working for these solutions. Because it's going to take budget, it's going to take money, it's going to take big money to, to have long-term solutions. But in the short term, we're hoping to take a little stress off our system.
We're getting close to my, my goal time here.
I know.
So Councilmember Scog?
I think there's at least four Mondays in a month. And if we don't water on Monday, I keep hearing the two days less watering a month.
So, so if we water, if you water every other day, right? If you water all the odd days in the month, right? Okay, so that's, how many days? If you divide the month by two, it's about 15, yeah, right? And so if you're, um,
That's where the two, okay, I can do the math, okay.
Yeah, and so, so normally you'll, you'll get, you'll water three days this week and four days the next week.
Okay.
So now we're watering three and three, so in four weeks, you lose one water day, or two water days.
It seems like we're still going on a premise that there's a lot of drowning grass. And I say drowning because it seems like we've used the word exponentially tonight. We've used enormous, um, maybe that was my word. Um, but it seems like if, if there's all this water we're wasting, I know if the city has come up with a new watering plan, it don't work. There's, I've, I've driven around every park and parking strip and they look horrible. Um, they're getting a little better because something changed, but two weeks ago, it was welcome to Moses Lake, your grass will die. Um, they looked bad. They, they were horrible. So whatever's, whatever watering plan they came up with didn't work. And it seems like that has been altered. But to say that it was a hot eat, there's, the school's grass looked great. On the other side of the fence, the city's grass looked horrible. The only difference could be who watered what and when. So, I, I mean, I, I guess I'm, it seems like we're asking people to come up with stuff that is insignificant. Um, you know, if, if a Monday, no watering on a Monday, that, I get that, you know, let everything recharge. That makes sense. You know, if we could say, okay, uh, don't, if you wa, water at the middle of the day, you're going to burn your grass because it's going to be a little magnifying glass to toast everything. So if you want your most out of your water, you know, educate people and say, hey, from 10:00 to 7:00, during this daylight hours, don't water. Um, you know, stuff like that, but, um, the, the rain gauge stuff, I wouldn't vote for that for nothing. The, uh, the sod thing, man, if you're trying to get some grass growing, you know, make it work. And, and what if you use seeds instead of sod? You're going to water that four times a day, every day. So I mean, there's, there's stuff that, you know, are we going to stop and talk to somebody? Not a chance. I mean, somebody pulls up in a city truck and with a, their car or whatever and says, we're going to have a chat with you about you watered on the wrong day. It had to go over like a lead balloon. So I don't think that makes any sense, but, you know, if we want to say, don't water on a Monday, I'd buy that. If you want to say, don't water between this hours and that hours, it's just, I'd buy that, but it'd be really simple.
Okay, I'm going to give, uh, Elliot DeLong a chance to speak since he's been very patient. Just make sure you state your name and city of residence.
My name's Elliot DeLong, I'm resident in Moses Lake. I'm speaking in behalf of the Columbia Basin Conservation District and our board. Um, I was going to go into a little background, but Mr. Lindsay covered that pretty well. I was gonna go into a little background, but Mr. Lindsay covered that pretty well. But I will note, as, as evidenced earlier, the depletion in the aquifer has been historically and is still currently noted, affecting the subarea beneath Moses Lake and the surrounding counties. The noted decline has put the region at risk of losing what is potentially a very valuable resource. Yes, of course, sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, it sounds better to me up here, too. As part of the Columbia Basin Conservation District, we participate in developing and implementing a number of programs and projects to address the water quality, quantity, and preservation issues, particularly those affecting the deepwater basalt aquifers. One of the key components of our programs is an extensive monitoring program to evaluate the conservation benefits on aquifer recovery. Our conservation programs are varied and cover a wide range of things. There's just a few that really apply to what we're doing here. We have the Odessa groundwater replacement program, it's been in the news quite a bit recently. It's an aquifer recovery project to exchange on an acre-for-acre basis, eighty-seven thousand seven hundred acres of deep well-irrigated agriculture from the aquifer onto Columbia Basin Project surface systems, with the goal of preserving the depleted aquifer for public and municipal use while stabilizing the long-term economic benefits of the region. Additionally, the Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition, which both the city and the Conservation District are members of, is a coalition of water purveyors and municipal stakeholders, aimed at developing locally implementable water resource activities that can address issues to domestic water. Those are all designed to be locally driven and implemented, since that is where the management and policies are generally the most effective. Additionally, the Conservation District has been working very heavily the last year with the Heritage Garden Program. It's a dedicated waterized landscaping and gardening plan, designed specifically for the arid portions of the Columbia Basin. The program focuses on what would be drought-tolerant, low-water-use natives that are still aesthetically pleasing, while providing and honoring the cultural and natural features within the area. CBC district staff provide the planning, as well as troubleshooting any issues that may come up during the planning and implementation process. As noted briefly earlier, as part of the Watershed Council, the Columbia Basin Conservation District held the annual Lawn Desert Landscaping Seminar with the help of the city and the Grant County Health District. The program focused on low-water, grass and landscaping alternatives, the City Park Water Conservation Program, as well as looking for volunteers for the Grant County Health District's algae tracker, and the Columbia Basin Conservation District Shoreline Nutrient Assessment Program. While the Conservation District cannot quantify the specific number of measurable benefits to any of the proposed conservation measures, any and all measures that exceed those currently in place would provide a benefit to the city with the ability to meet demand without inhibiting growth. The Conservation District supports water, further water conservation efforts, and remains ready to provide the city and its residents where, with help where possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a lot, a lot of information.
So, to sum up here, and, and I'm, I'll make some notes. Are, do you want us to bring back something new on this, or are you guys willing to vote a yea or nay on this right now?
I know-
I'm not ready to vote on it tonight.
Deputy Mayor Martinez would like to speak.
Um, I was actually gonna do just what Richard did, to summarize. I think, Richard, we'd like some changes made before it comes back to us for a vote. And from what I'm hearing is, we're okay with keeping the no watering on Monday in the ordinance, and no watering between ten and seven. It sounds like we need to make some sort of adjustment on the rainfall, um, and maybe-
Do you want that in there?
No.
So we'll just, we'll take out the measurable rainfall thing? That's fine. Okay.
And I would prefer a, a different name than, than the sod, what you have currently, because to me, it does sound like we're, we're, the city's gonna provide permission to lay sod.
So do we wanna call it a new grass installation variance?
No, I think it's what Chad stated, which is just new sod watering permit.
And grass seed.
New grass.
Turf. New turf.
I, I will point out, Councilmember Schwartz, you just used the word permit. There was a, a comment earlier by one of your colleagues about using a word other than, than permit. So we would like to have clear direction on, do we want the word permit, or do we want a different word in there?
Variants.
It doesn't matter to me, it's functionally the same thing. I, as far as I'm concerned, I would believe most people in this room, if they had a neighbor who was planting new grass, that they would just understand that.
I, I would hope so. I would hope so.
Right, so, I get that there's gonna be those phone calls. You may get three a year or something, so we need to have something in place, but functionally, I just don't see that somebody's gonna have World War III in the neighborhood because they planted some grass.
Yeah.
What other items in there do you want removed?
I think there was something regarding overspray, if your sprinklers get water on the sidewalk.
Do, do we, is there something in there for that right now? Or is that, or, excuse me, or you can't spray your, you can't wash your sidewalk off or your driveway? There, there is, there is, yeah. There is language in there about, we don't want, it would be considered wasting water to wash off your, a- a- and if, if you don't want that in there, we can take it out.
I have a question regarding that, though, because isn't there some specific regarding the groundwater, and this is more, I think, a question for Brad.
Stormwater?
We're not supposed to be, yeah, stormwater, we're not supposed to be washing stuff down into the-
The gutter.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it can become problematic, depending on what you're washing into the gutter that gets into the stormwater system.
Well, the reason I brought it up, and I hate to use my own yard as an example, but I'm going to, it, I have like a slope on the front of my grass, so occasionally, if that water, it, it runs off and it will go into the street, and I, I don't know what to do, other than go out there and hand water that part of the grass or whatever. So it's that, if I do that, is somebody gonna come to my house and knock on the door and say, you gotta capture that water somehow?
I think normally, what we're looking for is if, you know, there's, there's issues where there's a little overspray on the sidewalk, you know, and a little bit run, but, but if you've got a stream running down the gutter, that, that's, you know, that's wasting water.
I, I can follow with you on that one. I think we know those examples. I think when I watered by hand, sometimes I would turn the water on at nine at night and come out the next morning and turn it off. So, those things happen as well, yeah.
So, okay, so, do, do we want, do we want the language in there about the, the nozzle on the end of the hose?
Yes. Yes. Spark news, spark fresh. Do you have knowledge of- No, no, yeah, I was gonna say, we're, we're looking for some direction, so either pulling things out and trying to get it approved, or at least letting staff bring it back next time so that we can get it going. I, I mean, we're headed down the right direction right now. So on the nozzle piece, I saw a lot of heads yes, and I saw a few no. So yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nozzle, yes. Okay, there were some, um, let's see, what was the other?
Is there some way that, so I, I get, I think what we're looking at is if somebody doesn't have a nozzle, and you're, and you're washing your car, and you just let that thing run, it, it probably will, in most cases, go into the street.
Yeah.
Does that agree with, so-
Probably.
Is there some ord, is there some way we could rewrite this to capture all of it, where if there's a visible stream that goes, leaves your property, that that, or, is there some way of quantifying that? Because it gets, my concern is also, let's say somebody has a birthday party for their kid, and they buy one of those-
A slip and slide.
-inflatable thing for the day. I don't, you know, that gets a little bit difficult as well.
Yeah. Um, you know, and, and this, this ordinance doesn't address those types of things. The, the only other thing in here that I think there were some questions on the last time, was the water stop, the, the water leak stoppage and the seventy-two hour requirement.
Yeah.
Um, so do we want to ex, extend that, or, um, so, so the main, the main thing the language says in here is, upon discovery of the leak-
Right.
We're gonna give you seventy-two hours to stop the leak. Uh, or, um, so if you, I mean, if you have a significant leak that's, that's losing hundreds, if not thousands, of gallons a day, we're just asking you, okay, you got a couple of days to at least figure out how to, how to stop the bleeding, you know? You don't have to necessarily have the final repair done in seventy-two hours, but we gotta figure out how to stop the water flowing within, um, three days.
I believe we have some resources for that, if it, if it's dire, right?
We, we, if we have a big, if we, if there's a bad leak out there, Chad and his guys, they-
That's what I'm saying, if we find the identification of the leak, the city can help provide resources in this situation where, where we can't get it fixed quickly.
And, and if they're, if they're actively trying to figure it out, we're, we are happy to work with them, we are happy to help them try to diagnose, we're, we're happy to help. It's, it's, it's when we say, you've got a leak, your, your meter is telling you, you've got a leak somewhere on your property, and they ignore it. That's what we're trying to stop.
I think three days is plenty.
So that's what the language in here is saying, is you have three days to, to stop the bleeding, and you don't have to have the final fix, but you gotta stop the bleeding.
I will say, I had, somebody I know had an experience with this at a commercial property in town, and I will say that the water department was very, very accommodating and did exactly what you said, which was to help diagnose the problem, and they, you know, so, again, it's functionally what's gonna happen. I would vote for five days, but that's just me.
So, so Mayor, here's my question. So are you, is the council willing to adopt this tonight with these changes, or do you need to see the changes first?
I think we just bring it back.
So I have one, I'm sorry, I have one more question. Why do you want to extend the current conservation requirements to be year-round? Explain that one to me, please. I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, it, right now, it's the first, it starts in June, June first and goes till October first?
Yeah.
Yes. And so, on, on the tail ends, you know, so normally, people, when, when do we start watering our lawns? It's not June first. Usually, it warms up enough to where it's, yeah, in April. And so, all this does is, and on those shoulder months when people are still irrigating, we still get the same conservation benefit on those shoulder months that we, that we currently only have for that June to October timeframe.
I just wanted an explanation as to why you were looking at it like that, because I know most people start watering in April, or whatever, so that was my question, is why you were looking at it like that.
Yeah. At, when, when this was originally adopted, we were just trying to put the brakes on the very hottest months, June, July, August, September, but now we're just saying, why, why do we wanna worry about that? Why don't we just have it be year-round so we don't have to, people aren't, don't have to worry about resetting their irrigation timers and so on and so forth.
Okay, final, final question, Councilmember Scog had of Elliot. Step up to the podium again.
Elliot, my question was, if the irrigation system, the whole, for the farmers, gets fully implemented, what will end, the what, if, if the farmers are now using ninety-five percent of that aquifer that we're also in, how much of that ninety-five percent will be reduced?
Are you talking in terms of, like, what would remain?
Like if, if, if they finish the, the whole irrigation, the Columbia Basin irrigation project?
Oh, I can't speak on the whole project, per se.
Well, you had a number of eighty-seven thousand-
Yeah, so, the program focuses on, it's a portion of, so, the majority of the wells in, east of Moses Lake are on the Odessa, and they're not ta, where you, currently, the Odessa groundwater replacement project is looking to replace a, a portion between east of Othello through slightly north of the Stratford area. And due to the limitations of what is the East Low Canal, we can only pull a portion of that, there's only so far, it's approximately ten miles off the canal, would be the average of what we're working, and that's where we get the eighty-seven thousand-
Five hundred.
Seven hundred acres-
Right.
-that we're pulling off. In terms of how much that's pulling off, we're, I, I believe the approximate effort's something like ninety, ninety billion gallons.
Say that again?
Uh, the approximation on that eighty-seven, and I can provide different, better numbers if needed, it's approximately ninety billion-
With a B.
With a B, gallons annually, that will remain once those eighty-seven thousand acres are pulled off.
And the timeframe for that?
Um, the project's currently going right now, there's two, there's, I believe there's eight laterals, which are essentially pipelines off the canal. Three of those are currently under construction and engineering, two are complete, and we'll see operation in twenty-twenty-four. Um, yes, twenty-twenty-four.
Two, two of how many?
Uh, two of eight.
Two of eight.
Are, will operate in twenty-twenty-four. They're working right now with NRCS and the Bureau Office of the Columbia River through DOE, trying to get the final, essentially, on-farm materials in place.
So could we say twenty-five percent of that ninety billion gallons will be available by the end of next year?
I can't give an exact, but that, that's, it, it'll be somewhere, that would be a reasonable estimation. It all depends on the size of how many acres are coming off, they're not all equally split across, it's not ten thousand acres per pipeline, it's a little bit less.
Well, I guess, I, what I'm after is, is when that water, when we quit tapping out of the Odessa aquifer at those kind of volumes, and we're talking about, I'm, I'm ready to just put a ten million dollar budget every year for the next five years to figure out water, and, and we can stop everything, everything else if we don't get water. But if that's on the horizon, that much, then I don't wanna spend ten million dollars a year trying to get, you know, piddly groundwater when potentially there's billions of gallons-
That's not recharge. It's not recharging, it's just pulling it off.
I get that, but do we really think that that, 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 that kind of volume, that that thing isn't recharging to some degree?
I can't say I don't.
It, the, the, the deep aquifers-
Yeah.
Are, are not, are, they're not recharging.
Then they must be huge if we're taking those kind of volumes out of it every year.
So what, what it will do, if we can take that volume of water off of there, instead of our wells dropping five to ten feet a year, maybe they'll drop three to seven feet a year. And if we can take them all off, then-
We might have a hundred-year supply.
So, so, you know, the, 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 the part of the project that wasn't, they only, they only built sixty percent of the project, there's supposed to be a million acres, right? And they built about six hundred thousand. And this is supposed to be, you know, roughly another ten percent, eighty-seven thousand acres, right? So of that four hundred thousand acres that people are taking groundwater to try to irrigate, or whatever portion of that there is, you know, I, like I said, those, you, no matter what we take off of there, the water that we're pulling out of the Grand Ron, they've done, you know, their, their best chemical estimations, carbon dating, blah, 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 and that water is eight thousand to thirteen thousand years old. It was basically during the Ice Ages when those aquifers were filled, and, and now they're sealed, and they're not recharging. So if we can get them off of there, they won't drop as fast, and it'll buy us more time, but those, those aquifers are, they're, they don't recharge. Now, if we, if we can get some large-scale aquifer recharge project, maybe take the water out of the Columbia River and figure out how to inject it back into those aquifers and try to rebuild that, it'd take a lot, it'd take a long time, and take a lot of water. But the main thing, if we can get those users off of there, it will buy us more time because- it will buy us more time because the aquifer won't be dropping as fast.
I'd sure use the word exponentially when we got that water.
So I think we've beat this horse pretty well. We're going to discuss it again, Deanna, I know you wanted to speak, but if you could hold your.
So I guess my next question is when, what kind of a timeframe do you want us to bring this back?
Next meeting.
Meeting, please.
Yeah, okay.
Can we, does that sound, can we have it ready for them next meeting? Those changes? So how about the first one in July?
That's the soonest we can do, then let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. First meeting in July, we'll bring it back.
Let's move on. We have a consultant on the line that would like to speak on the Shoreline Master Plan Amendment. We'll let Kirsten Sackett kick it off.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So we had a little bit of discussion earlier. I am going to show a little bit of information from the staff report in your packets. I'm going to show you a couple of things online and then I'm going to kick the time over to Rachel Granrath with SEJ Consulting. Okay. So just referring to the packet, I wanted to just read a little bit of information. So the Shoreline Management Act requires all counties and most towns and cities with shorelines to develop and implement a shoreline master program. The SMA was passed by the Washington Legislature in 1971, was adopted by the voters in 1972. And the overarching goal is to prevent the inherent harm in an uncoordinated and piecemeal development of the state's shorelines. Local jurisdictions are required to periodically update their adopted shoreline management program to maintain compliance with state statutes and local goals and policies. So as we've noted earlier, our planning staff has been working with some consultants from SEJ Alliance to update the SMP. The CEPA review has been conducted on the SMP. A determination of nonsignificance was issued. The Planning Commission has reviewed the SMP periodically throughout the update process. I misspoke earlier, I said I thought it was April they reviewed it, but it was actually February 16th, 2023. And it didn't come forward to you sooner because we had to coordinate with the Department of Ecology and a coordinated press release for the public hearing that they had to approve. But the Planning Commission did recommend approval at that February 16th meeting and forwarded it on to Council. As I noted earlier, the updated SMP has been submitted to the Department of Ecology and they have provided a formal written statement of concurrence of the proposed amendments. And then on the packet itself, it referred you to the city's webpage, which is what you have up there right now. And it talks about the shoreline permits, that there are, most, that most types of construction grading or clearing within 200 feet of the shoreline requires some sort of a permit. So that could be anything from cutting or removing plants, repairing a dock, placing rock at the shoreline, grading, or installing a boat lift or dock. And so people can just call our department and they can tell us what they're proposing to do. We can let them know if it's exempt or not, what kind of permit they may or may not need. The very large document, the Shoreline Management Plan, will give you that guidance. But we can, we can give you that guidance without having somebody have to read the entire document. And on the same page, if you scroll down a little bit, I lost my mouse. Here we go. So under the regulations, we have the Shoreline Master Program Draft, Draft Ordinance, Ecology Checklist, there's some application forms. I've already pulled up the master program and as you can see, it's 164 pages long. And what we can do when we bring it back to you at the next meeting is kind of go through what the actual changes are. But I've pulled up a page, just Chapter 1, that will show you, like, as with any other document that we're changing, if we're proposing to delete any language, we do a strike through. If we're adding any language, it's underlined. So here on this first page, you'll see that we've added some exemptions to the standards. So it's underlined. And then if you just start scrolling through, you're going to just see like, there's no changes, no changes, no changes. Here are some changes here regarding the public participation process. So just to kind of give you an idea of like, if you didn't want to read the entire thing, you could easily look for the changes that way. But we can outline that in the next presentation to you. But I just wanted to show you that and I'm actually going to just turn the time over to Rachel, if you're still on the call. Is she? Okay.
Yes, can you all hear me? Okay, thanks Kirsten, that's a really good introduction. Covered a lot of what I was going to talk about as well. I just wanted to kind of circle back the big picture on this project and what the original intent was here. So when we look at shoreline master programs, there's really two types of updates that were mandated to do by the state. And the last one that you did prior to this was a comprehensive update to your shoreline master program. And that is a very heavy lift. It requires negotiation with ecology that I believe your city attorney was describing that previous process at an earlier agenda item. And so the difference between the comprehensive update is it really dives into specific science. You're looking at shoreline reaches. You're having kind of people validate the science side of things. And the periodic update, which we're going through now, is required by the Shoreline Management Act. And that's for consistency with state legislation, ecology regulations, statewide laws, federal laws, that types of, that type of thing. And so the majority of what has been changed here is for that compliance. Now, when we set the scope of this project, working with the city, we really wanted to look at ways that we could streamline the process so that it's easier for folks to read and use and for staff to implement. And so that's how we have proposed additional changes. And so in addition to scrolling through the 164-page document, there's a great summary, which is the checklist. And it shows you where those changes are and why we made those changes. So there's the required changes. And then we have about four changes that we have utilized in addition to that. And so the city also, we partnered with Four Peaks, which is an environmental and scientific firm that does things like whittlin' and shoreline delineation. And they took a look at your shorelines and saw, we're kind of doing an analysis to see if we needed to update our reaches and our shoreline designations, how we could better delineate the ordinary high watermark for better use for staff as well as the public, so that can link to your GIS. So that folks can kind of easily find their property and kind of see where that ordinary high watermark is located to the best of our aerial and really desktop analysis that we have at our fingertips without spending a ton of money having someone out on a boat doing those delineations. And what we really discovered through the process was that if we wanted to change our shoreline setbacks and designations, that it would require quite a bit of a heavy lift and burden of proof on the city side. And so at this point, based on where we're at in the periodic update so that we're compliant, we really chose to not pursue that option and spend more city funds on doing the delineation without really direct ecology support at this point to do that. And so we elected to just kind of fine-tune our maps, make them more readable, usable, update that GIS data, which over time really just gets better for, instead of, for example, with floodplain data, there's, used to be at two-foot contours, now we can measure at one foot. And so just everything's gotten better technology-wise. So we took advantage of that through this process. And then the other change that we made was changing the process to go through Planning Commission to, for certain shoreline permits, substantial and CUPs and variances. So that instead of going to the Planning Commission, that goes to a hearing examiner. And that's pretty common these days to have a hearing examiner take a look at those because it's technical in nature, it really gets the liability out of the city's side of things and streamlines processes and procedures for larger projects above that threshold. And so that has been added there. As Kirsten went over, we have had lots of iterations with Planning Commission on this. The project itself has been going on since, I want to say, the fall of 2021. And it's just, there's a long process with ecology. There's lots of statute stories, steps that we have to go through, including public noticing on joint hearings, which was that February hearing with the Planning Commission and ecology. And then after that, it has to go to something called an initial determination of sufficiency that ecology takes a look at and makes sure that it meets all of their needs prior to bringing it to Council. So there are lots of steps that we have to go through with the state in order to be compliant. And then I also heard some comments from the council relating to funding opportunities as well. There are, the ecology is putting out shoreline-specific grants. And so as you all talk about your water and how that relates to the shoreline, there is an opportunity for Moses Lake. Of course, you have to be compliant to be eligible for these grants, but to take advantage of funding, and I believe it's up to $250,000 or something like that for shorelines, to look at ways that you can implement, you know, kind of study water quality. There's an education component to, you know, reach out to your residents and make sure folks really understand what this is and how this can work for them as well as protect your shoreline too. So that's kind of an overview. We, again, as Kirsten said, there's not a ton of changes. This is not substantial in nature. So we're not updating your science, we're not, you know, changing setbacks or anything drastic there. It really is a compliance document with us taking a look at how we can streamline and ease the use of the document as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Or if Kirsten, you want to add anything to that, feel free.
I don't have anything to add, but I too will stand for questions, either of us.
I'd just like to remind the council to keep your comments brief and to the point. We are getting a little bit later in the day, so. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Surprising, none at this time. So where do we find those changes? The four, you said there was four items that we have the capability of influencing. Where do we find those? That was in the checklist?
And I didn't say four, like four items. But what we can do is with the next staff report, we'll make sure that you've got that checklist and we'll identify those areas. But I appreciate the opportunity to just get you the information and I will get you a little more information for the next meeting where the public can participate in a public hearing and then you guys can act on the matter at that point.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yeah, I'll keep this brief, Don. Some things were revealed tonight and I think because of the length of this process and being that you're newer here, Kirsten, I understand where some of the disconnect was. And probably the lack of questions tonight from us comes from the fact that maybe we just hadn't, again, the, it wasn't cohesive all the way through. And so that was part of the frustration.
And honestly, the lack of questions tonight is fine. Since it's your first time just kind of hearing about it, I'm expecting you'll have more at the next meeting, for sure.
Moving on to the Red, White &amp; Boom Fee Waiver Request presented by Doug Koots, our PRC Services Director.
I will also try to brief here. I'll keep it pretty simple. For Red, White &amp; Boom on July 1st, we do plan on having vendors in Macosh Park and the DMLA would like to have a sidewalk sale. Currently, we have a fee schedule ordinance and policies and procedures that we charge 15% and 10%. 15% for profit vendors, 10% for nonprofit vendors at special events. There's also a $25 fee for each business that would want to participate in a sidewalk sale in a downtown core. We would like to ask, as staff, we do not have the power to waive those fees, but we would like to ask the council to waive those fees for this specific event so the DMLA can have their sidewalk sale in conjunction with it and the vendors would not be charged the 15% or 10% as vendors in Macosh Park for the event.
Councilmember Schwartz?
What prompted this?
Questions from DMLA on the sidewalk sale and then vendors. We have about five or six vendors currently right now. But we have more that would be willing to participate from the farmer's market, but that do not want to pay the 15%.
Okay. And so in the future, what events do we foresee would be paying the 15%?
That's really going to be an ongoing review of our procedure here. I've already had conversations with Kevin about this idea. But we're going to be looking at revising this entire process and doing it in a different manner where we're not dependent upon a percentage of sales for this. I don't believe that's the appropriate way we should be going here.
Yeah, I just, I get concerned because while you have what I would consider positive discrimination in that downtown Moses Lake Business Association is for the greater good of the community, as is the farmer's market, considering they offer WIC payments and those sorts of things. You know, we could get into the arena of, let's say, somebody, I don't know what it is, llama show or something that isn't for the benefit of the greater good. You know, then you can get into issues on that end of things. Hopefully, all of that's considered as we go forward with this. But I would be all in favor of being able to waive the fees for now.
And Dustin, let me add, I had conversations with Spring Festival folks after Spring Fest and we had a long discussion about vendors. And most vendors that travel this state and actually outside of this state also, they pay higher application fees and not have to pay the percentage fees. And so I think they know going in what the fee is going to cost for them to be in that show. And then they're not worried about figuring out how much money they made and how much they got to pay back to the city. So I think there's a different way of doing it.
I like it.
Yeah, we are definitely evaluating that going forward and looking to make that change.
Councilmember Scog?
I'd like to see something as far as these infant programs, you know, that we could help them or not tax them. I mean, when you have two or three vendors and we're trying to get something going, you know, that that might encourage people to say, I don't know if this is going to work. I'm going to try it. So I would fully support waiving any fees, at least, you know, maybe if there was less than 10 vendors or something like that, just to kind of get the ball rolling and get a program going. I think that would be a good way to support that.
So my understanding is that as staff, we don't have the ability to waive them. But anything we could waive would be bringing to council for your approval. So it's not like we're going to start waiving fees for anybody and anything. It would be coming to you for those specific cases.
And I'd make a motion that we waive the fees on this event.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Administrative reports.
I do not believe we have any administrative reports this evening. We're done.
Council committee reports. Let's start with Councilmember Schwartz.
Got nothing.
Councilmember Madewell?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Fancher?
Nothing.
Councilmember Eck?
Yes. From the port of Moses Lake, we still have 157, 737 Maxes. At the current, Boeing employs 900 people, of which 100 are Moses Lake residents. The airshow we're having this weekend, we're up 40% over last year as far as ticket sales. And for those of us who like railroads, the rail project we've been working on for many, many, many years is finally at a point where they can begin construction of the whole thing starting mid-July. So unless something changes, it is done and we're going to have a rail to the port.
Whoa.
Yes.
Councilmember Scog?
Well, after that report, not much. We're, the financial report, we're still spending money. There was just some juggling, some funds that weren't spent here that were spent there. And of course, the ambulance is going to kind of.
there. And of course, the ambulance is gonna kind of take it in the shorts this time around, but that was per Brett, but that's all right.
He knew that.
Yeah. Anyway, it was, yeah, we're still spending money, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate Madeline's effort and just the quality of work that, that she does, and just right at the fingertips. And kudos to you, Madeline. I, I find it real easy just to trust, and I can look at you and go, Madeline, is this? And you go, and there's a real high level of confidence in, in your competency and judgment. So I really appreciate you being in that position. Thank you.
And I want to say a remark on that. We are absolutely blessed, Madison, just kidding you, when you came to our city and what you've done since then, redoing everything that had to be redone, all the stuff people don't see behind the scenes. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
I have just a couple of things. Chamber of Commerce, our local Chamber of Commerce, along with the Association of Washington Businesses, had a town hall meeting last week. It's called Washington in the Making, twenty forty. AWB is basically going, basically going around cities throughout the state, trying to understand each city's concerns and priorities. They're gonna end up putting all that information together and have a report out mid, mid twenty twenty-four, hopefully. The things that the attendants identified were concerns were, of course, water, housing or lack thereof, and the price of housing, and workforce. The pluses, the big plus, and I think this was just, everybody said this, was the people in the community. And I believe we all, I definitely agree with that. The second item to report is county commissioners will be having, it may not be a quorum, but having a meeting on July thirteenth at the port at ten thirty till twelve thirty. And this meeting is open. Commissioner Jones invited as many council members as can attend without creating a quorum for us, unless, of course, we want more people than three to attend. Maybe we can do a public meeting announcement or whatever to get around that. But this meeting is focused on allowing organizations and service providers to come and talk about who they are and what they do. Really is educational so that, you know, when, when we have citizens coming to us about stuff that they think the city should be addressing, hopefully we have some answers or some direction for them. So again, it's July thirteenth, ten thirty to twelve thirty at the Port of Moses Lake. And then I did just wanted to follow up with a thank you to interim city manager Kevin and Lynn Lynch. I put some requests out for some social media, because I had questions that are coming to me about our July fourth celebration. There were still plenty of people that thought we were doing this big event, and I couldn't find the information on any of our social media platforms. So they very quickly got that up. And then also just a reminder about our current water conservation, because we've got a lot of new people here in town, and also maybe just the regular residents that have been here for a while and forgotten about water conservation. So those were put up very quickly, and I appreciate the timeliness on that. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. I did attend the Spring Fest Committee meeting, and there was a lot of staff there. All I can really say is that it was a collaborative meeting and looking, you know, as a city and staff, how to make the event flow easy, better, be more efficient, so that they're not feeling as stressed. So I, I think the meeting went well. So thank you, staff, for being there and doing that. The other thing, we will be having a consultant come to town Thursday, June twenty-second. Ian Lockwood, in partnership with the State Department of Transportation, to discuss design training, to explore current transportation opportunities, to plan, design, and build walkable, accessible communities. So anybody that would like to attend that, you're supposed to, June twenty-second, I don't have the exact time at the moment. Levi Bisnet is the one that is heading that meeting. So reach out to him if you'd like to go. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Next meeting is June twenty-seventh at six thirty, unless we have a study session, most likely. So keep an eye on the agenda. Meeting is adjourned.